Mission order, please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Want to welcome everybody to the county commission meeting, July second, twenty twenty four, those in person and online. First item on the agenda would be the approval of the minutes.
Still moved?
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, same sign, motion carries, bills. Everybody have a list of bills in their packet? Not sure if there's additional, oh yeah.
I'll move to approve the bills.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second to go ahead and approve the bills. Any other questions? Roll call, Volk.
Aye.
Otis.
Aye.
Gassner.
Aye.
Wilhelmie.
Aye.
Myself is I, motion carries, financials.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the financials as presented. Roll call again, uh, Gassner.
Aye.
Wilhelmie.
Aye.
Volk.
Aye.
Otis.
Aye.
Berth is I, motion carries. Uh, treasures checks, list treasures checks in the packet. Any question on the treasures checks?
I'm moving to approve.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the treasures checks. Roll call, Volk.
Aye.
Otis.
Aye.
Wilhelmie.
Aye.
Gassner.
Aye.
Berth is I, treasures checks are paid. First item, I approve the of the agenda, any additions to the agenda? Anybody have anything for the agenda for today? Other than what's presented or printed?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as printed. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign, motion carries. First item on the agenda, Mr. Cummings, state's attorney, twenty twenty five budget, good morning.
Good morning, can you hear me okay?
Yep, yep.
So have to bear with me because I'm running two separate computers here at the same time. You got the one in the back on this, and I got the one in the front on a different system, okay, so. Before I really get into the budget here, um, want to talk about a few different things. Our who does the work, why we do the job, how we do it, what the duties of my office are, and our case numbers, okay? And you should all have a packet in front of you, and I have to say thank you to Ms. Candy because she had other better things to be doing this morning, she ran those off for me. Okay, so, in our office, we have one elected state's attorney, two appointed assistant state's attorneys, two paralegals, and victim witness coordinators, they double, and one legal assistant office administrator. Why we do it? Because every person in Ramsey County has the duty to obey the law, the absolute right to expect that the law will be enforced when it's broken. It's not a very fun or forgiving job, but we still think that it needs to be done. And then how we do it, or our mission statement, is protecting victims, prosecuting criminals, and preventing crime. So, there are several responsibilities of the state's attorney's office, or in case you've ever wondered what we're doing upstairs. Primarily, we're a prosecuting agency, we handle all of the felonies, misdemeanors, and infractions that occur within our jurisdiction. We also do all of the victim and witness coordination required by Marcy's law and the state constitution. We handle all of the appellate work that comes from those cases, juvenile delinquencies, child welfare proceedings, terminations of parental rights, involuntary mental health commitments, administrative traffic. But that's only part of the story, because we also do, we're the legal counsel for the county, we advise the county superintendent of schools. We provide legal advice to the department heads and township officers about their duties and responsibilities. Uh, my office is the legal counsel for the Mount Lakes Human Service Zone. A lot of times I operate as a de facto public information officer, press officer for the county. I think the phrase is run it past legal. We also do the administrative functions and supervision of the state's attorney's office. Additionally, um, I am expected to provide training to local law enforcement agencies on criminal law, criminal procedure, constitutional questions. We review and pursue retail liquor license, prosecution of bad checks due to insufficient funds or no accounts. We respond to every inmate application for parole, guest speaking at schools and other youth activities. Plus, there's several other things that I do and my team does that aren't mentioned here. So as you can see, we wear a lot of hats, okay? By the numbers, last year, our team opened one thousand and eight new cases. We had twenty, or we had two thousand two hundred and seventy-six court hearings. That comes down to two fifty-two new cases a quarter, five hundred and sixty-nine hearings quarterly, twenty-one new cases a week, forty-eight hearings a week, four new cases, and nine court hearings daily. So if you figure half hour each for court, put this in court approximately four and a half hours a day, the other four hours are after lunch break, we're working on getting those new cases open usually.
I got a question, well, shoot, out of the twenty-two seventy-six, you know, you have a thousand and eight new cases? The other ones were just cases that were from the prior year or?
Nope, um, that's just court hearings on new cases. And actually, the data is a little skewed under, because the statistics we have, they don't count any child welfare, they don't count any revocations of probation.
Well, that's how you get this twenty-two seventy-six versus a thousand and eight new cases.
Yep, so like, uh, that's, that's a thousand and eight new police reports, and then the court schedules hearings. And we're going to court several times on the same case, so that's why it's not the same number. But also, it doesn't really incorporate all of the hearings and cases that we're handling in a given year. So, approximately three hundred and thirty-six new cases per attorney, and seven hundred and fifty-nine cases per year per attorney, that number's higher when you, divided by paralegal, because there's only two paralegals, so they are working their butts off. Okay, I'm a visual guy, so here's a, a chart to help you see what we're getting tied up in throughout the year. Misdemeanors take a big chunk of the pie, okay, but what you need to know about this, looking at this graph, says there's a hundred and seventy-four felony cases, if there is any one felony attached to a case, it's counted as a felony. But at the same time, one felony is treated the same as eleven felonies, does that make sense?
So these are actually charged or these are actually prosecuted?
Both, but this is just the case number, it's not the amount of charges, so. If an, if a case has any felony at all, it falls into the felony category, and one is counted the same as ten, is counted the same as twenty, okay? Next graph, kinda looks the same. It's hard to tell in black and white, but this is what we're spending our time on. It's about forty-one percent of our time we're handling misdemeanor cases, forty-one percent of our time we're handling felony cases. Everything else falls in between, but juvenile delinquency has a big chunk of the pie too. Again, this doesn't touch, um, revocation of probation, because the statistics aren't recorded for that category, and it doesn't include child welfare, because those are all confidential hearings. Okay, this is the same thing, just broken out another way. This next chart, um, you can see what category is, new cases, total hearings, and I have it broken down by category, it's kind of a fluke. Last year, within the last year, we just happened to land on nine hundred and twenty-two cases, or hearings each for felonies and misdemeanors. Usually, it doesn't happen that way. I do have data available from the previous two years, available upon request. If you want to see a three-year average of what we're doing in our office, I'd be happy to get that to you. The long and the short of it is, we are fairly consistent, right, we're, we're hanging around these numbers, sometimes a little higher, sometimes a little lower. But we're averaging approximately a thousand cases. And the other thing about these statistics is that they do not include electronic citations. So if a highway patrolman pulls you over and issues you a citation, and sends it to the clerk electronically, it's not recorded in here, there's probably another three thousand of those. Um, but we don't count all of those, because we're not the ones going through and opening those, does that make sense? Clear as mud? Okay, let's get to, let's talk turkey, budget requests, okay? Budget basics for my office, um, essentially, our line items can be broken out, down into two things, salary costs and administrative costs. In twenty twenty-four, salary costs were ninety-three point eight-two percent of our budget. That means the remaining administrative costs make up that six point one eight percent. And then with in administrative cost, there are three line items that are required by North Dakota law that can't be eliminated, okay? So, my twenty twenty-five budget salary costs account for ninety-three point six percent. They see the number there in parentheses. Commission approved three percent, or step increase plus three percent COLA. I included three lines there, I have twenty twenty-four, what we budgeted, twenty twenty-four actual, because the numbers aren't the same. And then twenty twenty-five requested is that final column there, okay? And you'll notice that, um, on the notes section, all but one show step plus three, and I'll get to that in just a little bit. Okay. Last time we were here, Lee said he wanted to see the receipts, so I showed my math, attorneys aren't usually known for, being able to do math all that well, unless it's counting to six over and over again. So, first line item is Nancy Watt's salary. Currently, she's graded at grade three, step six. Brian and I looked over the numbers, pulled some comps, spoke with other counties. I don't know how we missed it, but Gallagher probably graded these positions in the wrong spot, they really need to be grade four. I, I went through and did the, the math as I was told to, I followed the steps. Should all pretty much make sense on this one, any questions about this salary line item? No, okay, moving on. Next line item, Daniel Howell, assistant state's attorney, this was the second position, or third attorney position that we added. Year before this, we had budgeted a little less, Daniel came in and negotiated, again, just working the steps as directed. And you'll see that not every step increase is the same, depending on where they are at in the steps, so for Daniel, because he's on step fifteen, he only gets a one percent step increase, opposed to Nancy, who's lower, she gets a two and a half step. And again, I can make the step chart available if you want to do the math with me. Next up, I have, uh, Kim Percune. For those of you who don't know, Kim has been with our office for a long time now. She also started with the county, I believe, in the tax assessor's office. She also had a hitch in the clerk of courts office. And under the current grading scale, she is maxed out, she has no potential for movement. And when we looked at the data of the other paralegals that are similarly situated, her salary is probably not where it needs to be. So I have indicated grade correction needed, and proposing that we move all three of the, assistant clerks is what they're called in your budget, but two paralegals and office administrator, I'd like to move all of them to grade four. And you can see my math on the bottom again. Any questions about this line item? No? Okay, moving right along. Next up, I have, um, Megan Crosby's salary. Megan's currently at grade ten, step six. But based on the current employment market for assistant state's attorneys and comparable positions, she's being underpaid, and I firmly believe that. I didn't have time to make five sets of copies, but up here in my hand, I pulled, there's ten comps in here. Only one has a lower salary than that, but the lower salary is seventy-three thousand four hundred, and that's for part-time. So, I'm gonna give these to Blaine, you can pass these around as you see fit. Megan took over, uh, Maron's position, so we did have a higher budget available. When she started, we didn't know if she, where she was gonna be at. She hadn't taken the bar exam. Since adding her, she has been absolutely lights out, she is super eager to step up to the plate. She's handled a couple jury trials now, she's done a ton of briefing, she takes a big brunt of the load when it comes to our juvenile delinquency cases, which you can all imagine, not very fun. She's super kind and willing to just step up to the plate whenever we ask. I think we have to correct her salary. She's sitting in the room here behind me, she's probably getting embarrassed, she doesn't like compliments that much. But, the way I see it, we got two options, we can lose a good employee because we're not paying enough, or we can adjust the salary and hope that employee buys a home in our community, sticks around for a while, puts those dollars back into our community. She is a young woman, I think, twenty-five, so she's also from a small town, wants to stay in a small town. And in our current, uh, job market for attorneys, that doesn't come along very often. So I really strongly urge you to approve, um, this salary correction, questions on this? Okay, moving on. Next, I have Dehan Chwan. We just worked the steps, again, great correction recommended, um, similar to the last two assistant clerks. Like I was saying earlier, Kim and Dehan really bust their humps, they're doing all of our victim witness coordination. They're sitting in fifty percent of the hearings each. Step increase here was one and a half percent. And then, last salary line item is my salary, again, just worked the steps. Not much to that one. All right, administrative costs. So, for the twenty twenty-five budget, administrative costs make up about six point four percent, or thirty-two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Twenty-eight thousand two hundred and fifty of that are true administrative costs, okay? So what do I mean when I say that? I mean, technology, dues and licensing, capital outlay, cellphone charges, legal research software. And then there are three statutory line items, and we'll go through them each one by one. But it's important to note that statutory line items only make up point seven nine of my budget, or four thousand dollars. Commission authorized the budget, our departments to budget a step plus three, but also asked us to cut five percent, okay? If you want to give raises, that means you have to make further cuts or deeper cuts. Here are the numbers, and this is how that works out in the state's attorney's office. Last year, five percent of my budget would be twenty-three thousand nine hundred and forty. Total administrative costs last year is twenty-nine thousand six hundred. And again, we have the, the breakdown there, how they are within the administrative costs. To satisfy, uh, the directive to cut five percent, I would have to withhold the approved salary increases and eliminate almost ninety-four percent of my administrative costs. Difference leaving one thousand six hundred and fifty-nine dollars to cover seven areas. In good conscience, I can't recommend that. I don't think, uh, I don't think it's right that my team would have to forfeit their raises, and if we're cutting ninety-four percent of the administrative costs of the state's attorney's office, it creates a real ethical question as to whether I can do my job appropriately. That, that's the bottom line, folks. Here's the administrative costs that I have submitted. Again, twenty twenty-four budget, twenty twenty-four actual, twenty twenty-five requested. And then I have them broken down by line items. So our statutory line items, inquest, contingent fund and service cost, possible inquests. If there is a homicide, or new evidence comes out that there's foul play, been suspected in somebody's death, state's attorney has the authority and the responsibility to order somebody disinterred for an examination and autopsy. We budget a thousand dollars for that, see the code sections here that require us to do that. Contingent fund, this is for trial expenses, including investigation and evidence. That amount is set by sentry code for a county of our size, it's fifteen hundred dollars. And service costs, in juvenile cases, there was a rewrite a couple years ago, and they shifted the cost of service, the responsibility of making sure that all the parties served. That's the state's attorney's responsibility. You see this code provision there? And you're probably thinking, oh, don't you just use the sheriff to serve people? I do, as much as I can, but unfortunately, our sheriff doesn't have the civil authority on the reservation. So really, what the service costs are, are the cost to serve someone on the reservation. Spirit Lake is really good to work with, they don't charge us anything, because they understand it's a give and a take. Turtle Mountain, um, the process server up there charges us one hundred dollars a document, for every document served. So, this for example, if somebody walked in here today to serve all six of you, that would cost me six hundred dollars, even though you're sitting in the same place. If it's two pieces of paper, it'd be twelve hundred dollars. Additionally, sometimes we have to go out of state, find a parent, or serve an action on somebody in another state, I budgeted five hundred dollars for that out of the fifteen hundred dollars.
So when you serve someone, there's no recoupment of that money when they get charged?
No. Nope, this is just.
So what do they get charged for court fees, and isn't that part of court fees? Why wouldn't it be?
So this is for child welfare, or parents who aren't taking care of their kids. Um, so there's no court fees associated with that, that's set by the Supreme Court, I don't have any say over that.
I just asked them the question, you know, because.
No, that's a good question to ask, um, the long and the short of it is, majority of these child welfare cases end up in people getting their parental rights terminated. And so when those parental rights get terminated, they don't have any responsibility to pay for their child anymore. And instead of assessing them the cost of service, the court would rather have them buy their kids food or clothes or something, pay child support as we go. So, the legislature has decided that it's the state's attorney's office responsibility to bear that cost. Okay? I know these aren't the most pretty slides to look at, here's technology. I used Steve's PDF that he gave to me. And then there's one, uh, two additions technically. To file, to store our files, we have to have a Dropbox license, six members in my office, six licenses. Right now, I'm paying one thousand and fifty. I looked through our agreements with them, last time they hiked the rate was approximately two years ago. Before that, it was two years before that, so I'm anticipating they're gonna tell us it's. an increase in cost. That's why I'm budgeted at twelve sixty for Dropbox. Everything else is a requirement. It's a necessary that I have to pay to have a computer. And I would say ninety-nine point five percent of all of our business happens through email, through computer. That's how we're checking our case status. That's how we're checking criminal histories. Checking the law. Office supplies. File folders are expensive. These are primarily what eats up my office supply budget is the actual physical files that I bring into court. We have tried looking for different vendors. Quill is the cheapest. We can get a carton of victim folders for three hundred and fifty-one ninety-nine. Budgeted three cartons, so approximately what is that, four hundred and seventy-five victim cases? If you remember back, we have about a thousand and eight new cases a year. It's just under half. We have some old ones laying around too, so we don't necessarily need a true half. It's such a crapshoot. You don't know when somebody's going to be the victim of crime or not. And you're probably wondering, well, what's the difference between one folder and another? The victim folders have more tabs. There's like a middle tab because we have all that constitutionally required correspondence we have to have. We put that in the back. We take their impact statements, their restitution figures. Basically, it's two files in one. So that's why those files are more expensive. Any questions about office supplies? Library. This might be a little bit outdated. Back in the day, the state's attorney would get a new codebook set to put on their wall with all the law updates every year. We don't do that anymore. It's not very, not very efficient way of doing business. Instead, we have a legal research provider called LexisNexis. It's essentially Google, but for lawyers. So I can look up the codes. I can look up the cases. This is absolutely a necessity for us to do our jobs effectively. I also, every year I get desktop reference criminal traffic law manuals. That's just a quick and dirty that each attorney can have to thumb to and find something, take a quick look and then go deeper after that. Any questions about the library item? Next up, I have capital outlay. On the PDF I got from Steve, he told me to budget for new computers. It looks like the lifespan of two of my computers are going out. They're twenty-twenty. So they're going to be five years old by the time we can order. And instead of buying six computers all at once, we're trying to rotate new two at a time. Additionally, those computers need to come with docking stations. Steve told me to budget four thousand. I looked, I just bought a computer last year for one of the front of house gals. It's about fourteen hundred, so I budgeted twenty-eight hundred. And then I have three monitors that are on the fritz upstairs. They're getting green lines. They're cutting in and cutting out. It could be a bad cord, but they're just old and they need to be replaced. So I also budgeted for those. Then when I was going through, I did consult with Candy. She recommended that I also add in general capital outlay in case somebody else spills coffee on their computer or something, or TSA confiscates it or whatever. So we have another two thousand there. Miscellaneous dues is the next item up. It really probably should be called licensing slash dues. Every year we have to renew and pay law licensing fees. Those are the first three line items. We also need to be enrolled with the state's attorneys association. So that's the next three items. Our paralegals have both been approved and accepted to begin a process to become what's called a certified paralegal. In order to do that, they need to be a part of the National Association and the State Association. That's what those line items are. And then Kim and Dehan have also, because they serve as victim witness advocates. They are part of the NDVWA. Is it a necessa- oh, sorry, tongue tied. Is it a necessity? Maybe not. But it really helps when it comes to applying for Volca grant funding. When you have certified paralegals, certified victim witness advocates. Other agencies and, you know, federal government, state government are more likely to give you more funds. So it's an investment for us. And there's a miscellaneous expenses item. That's everything under the sun between hey, somebody lost their computer charger, I gotta get a new one to you know, I gotta pay specific thing for this specific case. Travel expenses, every year to maintain our license, we have to go and get continuing education credits. The most cost-effective way to do that is to be part of the North Dakota State's Attorneys Association. They put on these conferences for us. But to do that, we have to travel there. Typically, they're held in Bismarck, why not Grand Forks or Fargo. Not really holding a lot of cover, conferences in Minnewakken or Rugby. So I have budgeted once in the winter, once in the summer, one driver, two riders and the hotel rooms for us. Additionally, I budgeted for Supreme Court travel. We're averaging about six to twelve arguments at the Supreme Court in person every year. They want you there in person to defend your appeal. That costs money. I have it broken down, mileage, miles per DM. We're anticipating that the mileage reimbursement rate is going to go up a little bit in January. Same with the nightly rate for government employees. You can see how I have calculated there on the far right. Last line item is special dockets, professional development. Sometimes drug court. You gotta go to a conference to maintain a certification. I think last year we sent Daniel to the commissioners conference with you all. And I thought that was a really good investment of our time to have somebody in the room understanding what's going on, what you guys are hearing. I'd like to continue to do that. Additionally, victim witness conference for the paralegals. Ties back into that Volca grant funding. They're more likely to give you money if you are there and present and doing getting the education that they're giving you. Cellphone charges, that's unchanged. We have one duty phone. We use that to talk to our officers. If there's an incident overnight, they call us. They might tell you we're not the best at answering at two in the morning, but who is? We really use this a lot. May not seem like a cut, but this is one area that we can save a little money on. A lot of state's attorney's offices, everybody gets an on-call phone. It's not always the most efficient, but it's certainly the most cost-effective. And nobody likes holding the duty phone anyway, so. And then my last slide here is just a full overview of everything. You can see all the line items, twenty twenty-four budget, twenty twenty-four actual, and then twenty twenty-five requested is down there highlighted in the corner. I know you told me to cut five percent, but the truth is I can't do it. And we probably need even more resources than we had this year to do the job the way it needs to be done. Unfortunately, there's a narrative out there that crime is going down. That's not really true, in my opinion. I think DOCR is playing with the numbers, right? We sentence people to prison, they get paroled out right away and all of a sudden it looks like the prison population's going down. Well, it's not true. They've just been moved out of the building. You, any of you are welcome. Anytime you want to come upstairs and look through the books, I'd be happy to show you what we're dealing with, what kind of crimes. Why I believe every single one of these line items is necessary. And I know I've gone on and on. Is there any questions for me?
So you're paralegals that are going for certification that requires like class time, or I mean, they're, they're furthering their education in order to get that certification.
Correct, but it's not, it's not like a degree.
There's a structure to it, things they have to achieve beyond their normal continuing education.
Correct, and they're actually doing it on their own time. So they work a full day for me and they're going home and doing it at night. I did not budget any kind of wage increase for certified paralegal versus regular paralegal. But this is just an opportunity for professional advancement for them, right? They, instead of leaving us to go be a senior paralegal somewhere else, they can become a certified paralegal with us. They have a little more pride in their performance and their work. And I think if they're going to do that, and the county should chip in for it, that's what I think.
That's what I was getting at, is that you're proving that they're to me, you've proved that they're changing their, adjusting things to where they should have done. This helps justify that in my mind.
Okay, good.
So the wages wise?
Yes, sir.
So when you went out and looked at this assistant attorney or whatever, are we considered large scale? So what do we consider to when I go looking out?
Yep, so.
Considering large scale. I'm looking at experience wise, and I'm not taking anything away from her, but coming right out of school. Just someone that has ten years' experience. Was there any thing, and I'm not saying one way or the other?
Sure.
Just, you know, I, I understand you have the small scale, medium scale, large scale. What do you consider?
So I would say
Cases and all that.
Our closest comp for a tax base is probably Walsh County. When you look at the population and the makeup of our budget. A lot of people try to say that we're the same size as McKenzie County. Well, that's oil country. That's not even close.
I'm not even looking at it. I'm, I'm looking at like a law firm. If someone was to go up to a law firm.
Oh, small scale then. Three attorneys would be considered very small.
Because I understand the other piece of it. I get that. I'm just looking at like what scale we would be considered as.
So I would designate us as small. We have three attorneys, two paralegals, one office administrator. So the attorneys were, were charging out all the cases. We're doing our client meetings, if you will, by talking with law enforcement. Our paralegals are wrangling all of our witnesses, helping with our form work. And then Nancy is doing the phone, the email, people who come to the window. We're running around a lot. I know that our tax base can't justify another position. That's why I'm not asking for it. I'm not even going to pretend that that's a good idea. Plus, we don't have the space to put them in. But the truth is, and, and let's just use Megan's line item. Truth is, she could lateral tomorrow and be making more money, right? Easy come, easy go.
Is that all because of the shortages of it or?
I mean, that's part of it. The other part of it is student loan debt. That's typically involved with being an attorney. The reality is, a lot of attorneys have six figures of loan debt and they're not willing to start at seventy thousand, sixty-six thousand.
Yeah, I'm just looking at, okay, let's say you went to school ten years ago and, and we didn't have the abundance of jobs. You were still having them three digits. So now the expectation is you pay more for less experience. You know what I'm saying? I'm not saying that people don't do their job with less experience. I'm just saying, experience plays a factor in wages. Also, you know, so I don't want someone to get topped out on a scale. And then three years from now, we're looking at the same situation where someone got maxed out on a scale. And now what do we do?
That's.
Because you can advance someone too fast also, you know.
And I understand that.
That's why I'm asking, you know.
No, it's, it's a fair question to ask. I don't have it in front of me, but I can tell you anecdotally, everybody's hurting across the state. Cass County has been pretty much immune to the, the hiring challenges when it comes to attorneys. For the first time this past year, they were starting to hire people who had not passed the bar yet, because that's how desperate they are. By the time it gets to Cass County, that means we've been hurting for a long time. Megan's position sat open for two years. I had two bites. First one, I thought I made him a fair offer. He accepted. He rescinded his offering, went to Grand Forks, because they could give him a little more money. And then I had Megan. Perfect example, if you want, if you want a good read, just look up the prosecution situation in Jamestown. He hasn't been able to keep assistant state's attorneys because they weren't being valued based on the market. The commission there for a long time said, no, we can't pay more. No, we can't pay more. Well, now they're paying a hundred and fifty for somebody who has my experience, and that's for an assistant. So if you can make a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in Jamestown, why would you stay in Devil's Lake for seventy-seven for doing the same job? I mean, you all have your own industries. You know that. It's the same thing.
Quality of life. We're a better place to live.
That's right. And I really do. I think she has made a huge impact on the office. Nice to have somebody with a real positive attitude that's willing to roll up the sleeves and go for it.
We appreciate the detail that you went into on your budget, Bo. Very well done, very well presented. We're not here to make any final approvals today. So.
I appreciate answering the questions also. Absolutely, and you know what? Door's always open. If you have more questions or you want to talk about something more in detail, come on upstairs. I'd be happy to show you around.
Appreciate that.
Thank you all.
Yep, thank you, Bo.
Mr. Gunderson.
Okay, um, for salaries, I just went with the step and three percent cola, as you can see. Sixty-five, eight fifteen, forty-six, six oh four, twenty-one, three eleven. And of course, for Seth, that's half. He gets the other half from the LEC. Overtime, leave that as it is, a thousand. Travel, not even sure why we have a travel line item, I guess, just because. Electricity in Memorial Building, I dropped that a bit from twenty-six to twenty-five. Electricity courthouse, both from forty-five, forty-two. Steam heat, go from fifty to forty-five. Utilities courthouse. From eight down to seven. Utility Memorial Building, five to forty-five hundred. Telephone services, we'll leave that at twenty-five thousand. Um, maintenance courthouse, go from thirty-seven, five to thirty-eight. Um, maintenance contracts, twenty-seven, five, twenty-seven, capital, we leave that at five thousand. For the total of three fifty-three, three three, three thirty-one. And for building improvements, I'll have two hundred thousand there. Questions?
And just so, correct me if I'm wrong, the generator is off the last year's budget, right?
Correct, yeah, this is for next year. Yep, we've already got that.
Okay, so that's. So that's where we get some of the cost to be able to hold, because we're not gonna have that expense.
Yep.
That makes sense.
Anything else? Move on to weed board? Ward salaries should stay the same at fourteen, uh, fixed charges the same, forty-five hundred, travel same, twelve hundred. Equipment same at six thousand, utilities same, twelve hundred, supplies same, seven thousand. Um, labor will go from fifty-six, five to sixty-one, five. Chemicals. Um, just to use up every year, our, um, mills go up a little bit, so I just threw in that extra little bit. From three twelve to three seventy-five, just to use up the last little bit in the, uh, mills. And, um. Come to a total of one fifty-one, seven seventy-five. Now, we use three mills on weed control in order to get our state, uh, reimbursements. If we didn't go three mills, then we would lose that, and.
So that's a reimbursement of what we pay.
Yes, for when we have chemical cost share, like we're doing now, we pay. Um, eighty percent, the landowner pays twenty percent, but we get that eighty percent back from the state. Because we are budgeting three mills, or the equivalent of three mills.
So when that eighty percent comes back, does that go into your budget, or how is that?
Just, yeah, back in.
The general fund, or?
No, it comes and goes back into the weed board.
Okay, so it just stay, it does stay with the weed board?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, and eventually, um, we've been having a surplus for several years, so we don't have to. Um. Budget exactly three mills. I can get by with like two, two and a quarter. But eventually, I think with, uh, chemical costs and costs of labor, we, and you can go four mills nowadays, said. The state has said, we may get beyond three mills one day.
One day.
So.
But, I mean, with the, with the return of some of that money, at least there's some return of it.
Yeah.
It's all thrown out the way.
Well, if I look at last year's numbers, you spent a little more than, um, fifty percent. Fifty-two, fifty-two and a half percent of the the budget, so that's a lot returned.
Right, right.
Yeah.
I mean, I I just think all the sitting here, that's something to know. Then you've got, say, two employees that do the spraying.
Yes. They haven't been able to get out much between winter and spring. But. They're trying.
Anything else, Roger?
Um, no, and then also with the labor and, uh, that covers our state highways, which we contract out. The state highways just right.
No, no new equipment needed that you can?
No, it should be good for a little while yet.
Okay.
That's one thing where we may, you know, down the road, gonna need a new spray truck, obviously. Um, we've had this one for probably ten years or more. But, um, it's in good condition yet, so.
When you say we, you contract the state highways, the state pays us then?
Yes. Yeah, we get reimbursed. And this year, last year was twenty-five thousand, and this year we bumped it up to thirty-five thousand four. Because our, our contractor with sprays, he, he raised his rates, but he hadn't. Six years or something, so, I mean, it was fair.
So, that portion of it, you don't use the two employees?
Yes, and the two employees and the, and the state highway is in the labor.
Okay.
You do any spraying in the city?
No. City takes care of that.
Any major building expenses that you foresee coming up?
Um, I'm getting estimates on putting electronic door openers in the bathrooms on the second floor, just like the ones we have on first. I've gotten one estimate, and I'm waiting for the second.
Any remodels of the third floor?
Well, actually, that's what the two hundred thousand for.
Okay.
Before, I was figuring on that.
Perfect.
Now, with all the rain, all that situation with the water, I mean, did you, did the recocking that you did?
Oh, yeah, um, had one little hole, with a little bit of coming in, and I found, went out and found a couple little holes and filled them in, and we haven't had anything. So, yeah.
Anything else you can think of, Roger?
I don't right now.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Roger? Thank you, appreciate your time.
One, one each of this.
Mister Barth, welcome.
Welcome, thank you. Uh, I'll try to, uh, be a little brief, but you cut off a little bit. Uh, you know, the good news is, my numbers are smaller than the others. Uh, you guys, Ramsey County provides fifty-five thousand dollars to forward Devil's Lake's budget, and if you've got the second page there in front of you, you can kind of see that. In my time, I've been able to manage, I haven't had an increase. It's the same dollar at, uh, amount that I've asked of the county since I started, uh, five years ago. Uh, how, how have we done that, you know, this last year? It helps to have a guy go onto Medicare. My healthcare costs went down, going to Medicare versus the private one-person plan that I had, so you can. See that line item, uh, it's, uh, it went down significantly the year before. Uh, I've increased it a little bit, and the reason I've increased it is for twenty twenty-five, the, the budget request for that year. Is yours truly retiring at the end of the year? So, uh, the person that hopefully we can get hired between now and the end of the year, and Paul, you're on the board, you've heard the discussions, uh. Hopefully, we can get someone hired and brought in. It'll depend on, on that person, you know, when you're one person, they can't be on the county's. Uh, excuse me, county's insurance or the city's insurance, it's a one-person plan, so I was on a blue class, blue shield plan. Now I'm Medicare and a next blue advantage plan, so that, uh, that item. Uh, salaries, I I've, I've not taken a salary increase the last couple of years. I've asked for vacation time from my board, so. Uh, by getting a little bit more vacation time, I'm able to do a little bit more fishing, those type of things, so that's why, uh. The number, my number for permanent salaries, the reduction that I'm showing at eighty thousand you see there is, I think that's. Probably a good number that someone can be hired for twenty twenty-five. Uh, that, you know, Bo mentioned the same challenge that we're having, economic development directors, it's, there's two or three cities that haven't been able to get candidates. So, the biggest challenge is that. Uh, I've, I've personally got a couple of people that I've talked to that I think would be good candidates, and you'll hear more about that in the coming months. Uh, that I think that, that number is probably a pretty good number for bringing somebody in. The other items that are there, I'm gonna go through all of them. You can see, the website has been a challenge, uh. We didn't have a website when I first came aboard. I brought one, brought one aboard, and, and, and we work real closely with the chamber. To direct people to our site, or to their site, I should say, from our site, so we've kind of. Piggyback off of this, of, of the chambers, because when someone's looking for relocation, looking for, uh, you know, business ideas, I just kind of direct them to that, so, uh. Spend some time at Forward Devils Lake N D dot com is the, uh, is our website. Uh, what I thought I'd spend a little bit of time, if you guys have any questions on the budget, it's pretty much the same that, uh, you and prior commissioners have seen. If there's no questions on it, if you'll turn to the page that I handed out, and Candy, you didn't have it in the packet, I apologize, I just got that done, but. This is something I do for, I, I get some funding from investors, so, uh, uh, you know, uh, let's say. Ramsey Bank now, uh, uh, First United, uh, Bank, uh, of, uh, Ramsey County and Park River. You know, they'll give a thousand dollars to be one of our, our sponsors, so these sponsor dollars that we get in, uh, also go towards, uh. You know, uh, some of our activities, and I'll break that down here a little bit. But, uh, our annual investor letter, I like to give them this kind of, kind of a breakdown of some of the milestones and. And Blaine, commissioners, you guys have been in the meetings, you've, you hear about these are the, you know, the things that we've been working on, but these are some of the milestones. Uh, I've been here, Commissioner Frith, you, you've seen it, I don't think the rest have, but the, uh, the very first one, the on the road, the mobile. Career exploration classroom. This, Commissioner Hodges, have you heard about this? We've got a van that goes out. And it is throughout the region of Region Three, not just Ramsey County, but of Region Three. But Region Three, uh, you know, a lot of our workers in Ramsey County come from outside our area. But anyway, that finally is on the road. We had some challenges with that, that's through the North Central Planning Council. How many of you know Ann Pollard? I mean, do you all? You guys gotta meet her. She's a job coach that we've hired on a contract basis. When I say we, that's Sandy Shively in the Regional Council. For, to go out, talk to businesses, talk to schools, uh, she's been out hitting just about every business in the region that's got, you know, major employers. Uh, Commissioner Lee, I, I, if you need a welder, she's gonna find you one. I mean, she's that type of person that, that'll do it, uh. A lot of the programs, we've come to you before, have been to help align our youth with, you know, graduating youth with the jobs we have in the region. She did that for General Equipment. Do you know General Equipment at all? General Equipment does, um. What's the brand name, Commissioner Volk? It's Kamatsu, Kamatsu, that they, and she was out traveling through three states, trying to help them keep up with their technician needs. So that's the type of employee that she's, is, but, uh, but anyway.
She's just been on the road for a year, right?
Uh, is, no, not quite. That's been a problem. It should have been on the road for about a year. It's been on the road about six months. Uh, but it is on the road now, and she came in, I think she started March, April timeframe, Commissioner.
So, next year at this time, she might have some statistics of.
Yeah.
What's working?
She's already doing monthly reports that, you know, that's a great idea. Candy, make sure that I get that monthly out. I'll, I'll get that submitted to you guys. It's going to the Regional Council, so it's. At Sandy's desk and my desk, and then the other counties. In the six counties, there's really only three economic developers. It's myself and Sandy, and then, uh, Langdon has one. Uh, the other counties, they're, they're vacant right now, uh, although New Rockford has a part-time one, I guess they do. But childcare, moving on, we, we've done a lot with supporting childcare centers, uh. The, the investor dollars we get, we do a childcare incentive, and we provide the childcare directors. With a fifty-dollar per head incentive for their children, so if they've got seventy kids, they get thirty-five hundred dollars, whatever, and around twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars of our investor. Dollars go to the childcare centers in Ramsey County. Uh, so you see that, the ten thousand dollars of childcare centers, I think, over the four years, I calculated, it's about forty thousand dollars of, since we implemented that program. That's a program that's being modeled through other parts of the state, uh, Williston, they started doing something similar to that area.
Brad, do you know, is there a childcare shortage, or what that number would be in?
You know.
Devil's Lake, Ramsey County?
You know, d- don't take me for the exact numbers, but we're roughly sixty percent of the capacity that is needed for childcare from zero to. I don't, I don't have the exact age. I'm gonna say it's probably twelve.
Yeah.
We've got about sixty percent, okay, Jeff, so that means we don't have a hundred percent, but we're one of the best counties in the state.
No.
That's, it is ridiculous.
Childcare providers that we have can't get help to max out.
That's the problem. You guys.
It's not that there's not something available, it's just that they can't max out their number.
They're not, that, you understand it perfectly, Commissioner Volk. That's exactly it. Sunny side, I think they're, you know, they're supposed to be seventy kids. Yeah.
Just to grasp, you know, we have.
Yeah.
How it actually works. Some of them are only operating at sixty percent.
You know, uh, we screwed up as a country not anticipating baby builders. I mean, you know, I'm retiring, and, and there's not enough people to fill those jobs. And in the certain lower income jobs, and childcare supervisor administrator is not the best paying job, if they have student loans. So one of the things that we've been doing is, is our twenty twenty program. That's the next thing, or not the next thing, it's a little bit further down, that workforce retention program. The whole idea of the twenty twenty program, when we started it here in Devil's Lake and Ramsey County. Was to align our local graduating youth with businesses by helping them pay for their college costs, but in, in, in. Return for that, they had to live and work in our region for three years. Uh, so that's what we've done. The state came along after we started the twenty twenty and created something called the Career Builders. And, and Paul, you've heard me talk about this ad nauseam in the meeting. Career Builders take six thousand dollars that we. At Forward Devil's Lake use from growth fund dollars, the sales tax dollars. They match that, okay? I also make the business do twenty-five hundred, and that's six thousand plus twenty-five hundred is eighty-five hundred dollars that the state will match. That's a seventeen thousand dollar scholarship or a loan repayment for a student. So if we can line up a graduating youth with the program, let's say to be a diesel mechanic at, uh, leading edge equipment. They get that seventeen thousand dollars over a two-year period, being the diesel mechanic, a John Deere mechanic, uh, but they gotta come back and live and work in the region. And we've had over, uh, I don't know what is the numbers here, the, the numbers that I have right now, we've got over, uh, twenty students right now looking, but we've had thirty people. But you know what? The same problem that Commissioner, or that your, uh, county attorney or, or city attorney just mentioned. The first kid that I got from Langdon, okay, went to work for Devil's Lake Cars. I shouldn't mention the name, the name, but I did, okay, Devil's Lake Cars. He found a better paying job in Minot. He didn't even find it. They, they sought him out, so Minot came to Devil's Lake. And sought him out, and he's been here working for them for three years. He's, he's paid his dues, so to speak, for the program. But we lost him because he's going to Minot. And I can tell you, they, they need automotive technicians, and they need highly trained ones. He's the newest kid out of school. And he's gone to the latest credits, probably one of their more valuable technicians because of that experience, and we're losing them, so. We have to keep that wage scale up for, to help those employees that, uh, that are highly sought after. And the highly sought after ones are the ones that we've used this twenty twenty program and the, and the North Dakota Career Builders. Uh. Kojak snack and pack, uh, Kojak's still there, you know, they're at about twenty-three full and part-time employees. I was talking to Chase yesterday. They've got business from all over the state. They're, it's still cha-challenging for them, getting those sales. I mean, if you go into the popcorn aisle at any store. There's a lot of competitors, but they've done a pretty good job of hanging in there and, and doing that. Primary sector businesses expanding, uh, we've, we've used the Flex Base, the Bank of North Dakota with Summers, with North Dakota Petroleum. Uh, even Sioux Manufacturing, uh, they're a manufacturer. They've got employees in our area. They're outside of our county. By a little bit, right? But we've helped provide some of the dollars to them as well, uh, with a couple of our programs. Uh, the last thing, I, I got elected for a two-year term of the Economic Developers Association. I'm the president of Economic Developers in the state. And, uh, I got that last fall. Uh, I'm gonna be one of the first presidents to work a year and then retire halfway through the term, so. So I'll probably lose it because I won't be an active economic development person, and they were fine with that. Uh, last night, the city approved a thirty thousand dollar amount from the growth fund that's not on the sheet. It's my notes here. That thirty thousand dollars is for a marketing campaign for talent attraction and retention type program. That thirty is gonna be dollars that we're gonna be able to get from the state of North Dakota Department of Commerce. We're shooting for fifty thousand, so Suzie will be here, I'm sure. Uh, Suzie will talk about the chamber and the Ford Devil's Lake initiative and the dollars we have, and Ann Pollard will be part of that program too. So we're doing what we can do with these programs. We try to get the word out that they don't always get completely out and I'm on the radio show. If you guys have heard Coffee Time, I talk about twenty twenty. And I talk about our Career Builders Program, keeping kids local every time I go.
So.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You have any statistics on the people that have done it and then they go to three years? Do they stay or move on? I'm saying so.
The first one.
You're saying you're losing the one that did their three.
Yep.
And, and you don't have to throw up numbers now, but it'd be nice to see a chart to see, okay, we went three years and paid this money to get their college, whatever the program for the twenty twenty. How did it proceed out to the fifth year? Are they still here or?
I'll give.
Isn't working, is it not?
I'll give you a kind of a compilation that I use. The way that works, the, we don't give the money all in one shot. So if a kid starts, I've, we've had some kids where fifteen hundred dollars went for the first semester and they quit after the first semester. One kid got a girlfriend and went to Oklahoma. All right. So we were out our money. States, and it really isn't our money. Once we get the dollars to the school, the state matches it. It's called a donation. It's gone. So.
What I'm looking at is.
Yeah.
They get in the workforce, you know, and they're supposed to be three to five years or whatever.
We got about thirty-five, forty. You'll, you'll see the, I'll, I'll get you, get it to Candy. I'll get you the report. It, it lists the names. I might, I might zero out the names a little bit.
Yeah.
But I'll, I'll, what I'll do is I'll, I'll break it down, but we keep, keep a track from the beginning. We've lost some commissioner, uh, that.
There's, there's always.
Yeah. But, but this is the first one that we've lost that, that really bothers me because he put in his, his time. He stayed three years. You know, and then he was recruited and we lost him and I don't think we would have been lost him if we had been a little bit more competitive. Now, having said that, I remember interviewing a kid from Langdon and I remember him saying, you know, I didn't intend to spend my life here in, in Ramsey County or Cavalier County for that matter. And I wanted to see the world a little bit. And that's the comment that he made. So. So that's the, one of the challenges we have obviously as a community, you know? I talked with three people last night of my, my wife's relatives from Munich that were all graduates here. Now two of them are in Montana and one's in Minnesota. They're, but they're not here and their families aren't here. And we've lost a lot of that. If we could slow that down a little bit, that'll help us with the loss of baby boomers. Lot of local projects, uh, would get more of a breakdown. Uh, I guess through Commissioner Paul being on the board, you can give them an update sometimes too at some of the projects, but you know, the. Without the Bank of North Dakota Flexpace or Pace Buy Down, this job would be a tough job. That interest buy down program that we have, and we do a lot of projects with that. That is something that we have to have. We're doing it for the Woodland Resort Project that's happening, Ackerman Acres in the, in the role or in the stage of hopefully. Hopefully being the hands we'll transfer down the road. That'll be one that we'll use. Commissioner, I mean, you can think of some of the other projects that we've had, the Summers Manufacturing, a lot of different, one of the, uh, programs are, are that interest buy down where our dollars are leveraging other dollars. The Golden Rule Downtown for Downtown, uh, we did an interest buy down to help them with their transition to that building and moving into that building. Any questions at all, Commissioner?
Great stuff.
You know, at, at the end of the day, after five years and, you know, resigning like this, and I'll be in front of you probably one more time before I leave. We've had a lot of activity, a lot of it is, you know, kind of hidden, you know, people don't see some of the things that we do as a board, you know, we've talked about that. And there's, you know, even on our board, some of it's controversial. Do we help downtown businesses? You know, why do we, why are we helping downtown business? Well, we've got a downtown that's pretty vibrant, but we need to, we need to keep it that way. We've got a lot of empty buildings. So we've been trying to do things that way. Childcare centers got to be supported obviously and, uh, the various projects that we do have, uh, are geared toward that workforce retention and recruitment. Anyway, any other comments, Commissioner Gesner, anything? This campaign, uh, from Suzie and Ann Pollard for this Region Three, I will make sure that they come in front and talk about it. You'll hear some of the things they'll be doing. Some will be marketing dollars spent in some of the cities where we know and identify people come here for tourism. And we're going to try to take, you know, those dollars to convince them, instead of just coming here once a year or twice a year. Why don't you come here and live and you can enjoy the lake and enjoy the fishing or the hunting as long as you can, or enjoy it just the way of life. You know, we've got. Some of those people as well that it's just a quieter, smaller town, uh, way of life. But I've enjoyed my time. Hopefully you'll see me one more time before the end of the year and, uh, go forward from there.
Perfect.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Appreciate your time. Ramsey County Water. I know they had a, a room full earlier. I'm not sure if they're all still over there or not. Talking over there, budgeted earlier with them, uh, I don't think they had any increases. From the past year. I think Dwayne may be willing to come over here and discuss that. Want to see if he's available? And yell at him. And if they are, we're going to put them on towards the, and if they're still busy. They're still busy, right? Oh, well, they could. If they're busy, they could. They still got a room full over there, Paul?
Yep.
Okay. Brian, if you, uh, have a minute or two, if you want to go over your budget?
Yeah.
Cut you a couple.
Thank you.
We had quite a few questions throughout this process of where we needed to end up. I think we've came up, uh, without a whole lot of change from prior years. So far, you know, mostly our budget is, uh, handles the office expenses and since we don't do dirt work ourselves, the Edmore Drain Ten Project is obviously shows up in there. Had some questions with the Drain Ten Project as how it's affecting the budget, but we do have money put away that if expenses go up, we're still able to handle that without taking any additional from the county here. So. Is there any specific questions anybody's seen on that, that they? Would like to get some background on or? Budgeting has gotten a lot better since we've got Stacy in the office and the books cleaned up. We're able to, uh, match it up pretty close with. What we are, the way the books runs or a lot more confident in it than we have been in the past.
What's this? I see you got on here, this Channel A, we pay to hate.
Um, no, we added that in this year before the Channel A, since that is our property. We've, it's been hated and now we, mostly for liability reasons, we set up a contract with it where we're getting a little bit of income off it, not very much, but.
Brian, do you foresee any, uh, additional maintenance being needed up on Channel A?
Uh, Channel A, we're going to be replacing the one culvert that's collapsed right now. Uh, so we do have money in the Channel A. Fund from the original assessment that's left over that'll cover that for right now.
Okay.
Uh, so that's our, our talk has been when our contractor's out there seeing what condition that culvert that he's going to replace is. Possibly we are going to need to, uh, budget for replacing all the culverts. I can't remember if there's six or seven of them. They're fifteen feet deep and a couple hundred feet long. So they're substantial project if we have to go with that. First, we want to get the one done. Uh, his estimate for that came in a lower than what we have available. So we'll get the first one done to see where we're at and get an estimate on the rest of them. Uh, you know, if the lake ever goes down, there's gates and stuff that probably need to be installed back on the Channel A channel. So we have been exploring what it takes to, once we get some costs down, to have a assessment leveled on the Channel A assessment area. So right now we're not expecting any of that money to come out of the general funds through the county. It should be paid through the Channel A assessment.
So what is it? What is the Channel A assessment area?
It's basically all of Ramsey County up into Cavalier a little bit. Just trying to go offhand of what I'm remembering them out, but it's everything that we've got under assessment now, which covers, you know, that goes all the way up to quiet pretty much. So that's all the Channel A assessment area. It's rather substantial amount of land, so it doesn't take very much to pay, bring in a fair amount of money with it. So. It won't be a huge surprise to anybody on their tax bills if we have to go that route.
Any updates from your meeting this morning?
Our meeting this morning has been rather interesting. Uh, we're, a lot of it is, uh, you know, we're dealing with the Lawton Edmore area. That's where the majority of the complaints for our, the county come from. Seems like people that are covered under the Hemer Sullivan and Sarkweather Assessment Areas. Since it's being maintained, we have very few complaints other than just general maintenance from them. So. Today we had guys come in from the Lawton area. They're being flooded out. I'm not sure if the Edmore Uli is flowing down into them yet. But coming out of that Lawton Rocket area, the water does not move. The water is actually backing into them and raising right now instead of flowing out. So they're, what they brought up today is they're asking to start assessment work possibly on some of the channels over there, trying to get the water flowing out. Uh, we've also had, uh, the guys from the Doian area where it's where Sag and Clear Project was at. They've kind of run into some of the problems that we've discussed when we started that project that, you know, we, a project was to do a specific amount of work to pay for it and be done with it. And now they've done that and it's worked great and they'd like to go further on it, but problem is there's no, no place for the money to come from. So there's been a lot of talk of that area about, uh.
But they're happy with the result of them.
Yes. Uh, have not heard any complaints since we got finished with it about, about that snag and clear project. The last complaint was a. Guy had a little bit of problem accessing land on either side and a culvert was discovered to go in and make him a crossing and that's been the last complaint about it.
But it's worked well?
Yes. So all those guys have seen how well that taking care of your channels does for the landowners and that's interested in going into the next step on it. Really a lot of our major expenses all come from our assessment areas and that money is, comes from directly from the landowners. So.
Anything else for Brian? Brian, anything else for us?
Uh, the only thing, uh, beyond this now, uh, you know, there's been a little bit of talk of having a comprehensive water plan for Ramsey County. Drawing up, uh, so we have kind of a framework of how you want to handle these questions when they come in. Is the county in favor of assessment areas, that kind of stuff? Uh, what, what direction everybody wants to see the water board going with how we. Handle questions when they come in and what we kind of back and try to push forward with. Uh, and just today, the guys that were in, that was brought up a few times that why don't we have a? Full plan that covers this whole area, you know, that so that everybody's on the same page and working. So. That's, uh, we're going to try to discuss it a little bit at our meeting. I don't know if that's something that the commission feels is a good idea to proceed with. It'd be good to hear a little feedback on that and.
I think it's, I think it's a good idea. You know, to have it, you know, at least a general direction, what you're hoping for.
Uh, did you ever get the email? It said, okay, so you did see it?
Yep, I've got some questions.
No major issues that you need?
No, I just.
Want to address on that or?
Okay. No, I just got a couple of questions.
Okay. And you know, really, we feel as a water board, it's, it's, we can come up with a draft or outline of how we want it, but I think it's really more of the commission. As to decide on the substance of it and, uh, anything details. Unless you feel differently.
What do you want to accomplish with that plan?
Well, the main thing is to get everybody on the same page, showing that, you know, we are trying to work together, you know, we're, hey, we're starting at the top with the Drain Ten Plan. Obviously it's having an effect on the lower people. And at this point, you know, it's been thirty years since this whole wet cycle's really started. I think it's time that, uh. Somebody needs to step up and help out these landowners around here that are at the bottom. Uh, not many of you were at the meeting that Paul Christensen hosted out in Penn last year, but two of the comments that were made that kind of stick with me that. One of the main guys that's been hit stood up and said, oh, I thought somebody was going to come and help us and do something. Nobody ever really has. There's reasons why. You know, and nothing's come about, but then the next came from some of our legislative leaders that, you know, we're waiting for a local plan to be put forth that we can get behind and help you out with. So now we've got the conundrum that somebody's looking for somebody to help them and the guys that are, have the ability to help them are waiting for somebody to stand up and say, hey, this is what we want done. Well, there's a lot of differing, differing opinions in it. Uh, you talk to three different people, you get three different ideas of what's going to be, needs to be done, but. And I think we need to work forward and at least get some ideas out there to start the conversation and start trying to do something. You have a few different options so that people can choose what they think is the best for them. And I think, uh, from what I see, uh, this commission here is probably the guy, people that should be going forward with it. We've got people that are been affected by the lake negatively. Some of the guys, uh, seem to enjoy the lake the way it is. I mean. We've got enough experience here and. But I think maybe it's time we look forward into doing something to help out the area.
Questions? Thoughts?
If we discuss our, the water plan, if we kind of approve it in the general idea is kind of what we're talking about right now. And forwarding it on to the commission to discuss, might give you a little bit of framework as to how you want to proceed or. Give you ideas so you can take off on your own plans, but our main thought is, uh, you know, how do we handle the water? Is the county behind these assessment districts, you know, they're. For the amount of acres we have, it's rather expensive to get a whole full assessment through. This one is, that we're working on is the cost has skyrocketed from what we originally thought.
Have you thought about, uh, having smaller assessments?
That's what we were discussing with the guys today, that, you know, maybe we need to fight it off in five to 10 mile chunks or something instead of trying this big one.
You, you know, you have people that were. They have always expected some cattail spraying and now that cattail spraying is no longer available unless it's on an assessed drain. Um, have they talked amongst themselves about putting a, an assessment on a three or four mile section of, uh. Drain to just get that basic maintenance done?
Well, that's, uh, you know, that has come up today. I don't know if anybody in the area has really thought of it too much other than just. Thought of it too much other than just the couple of guys that were in today, that, you know, they're kind of in that area that we used to do the cattail spraying in. And they, they said, uh, what started it was a county project in the, for a Lawton area. Years ago to drain out the town of Lawton. It just kind of went downhill and dumped the water in a slough to relieve the pressure on the town. And now the land's changing hands. Guys are saying, well. The water's coming already. What do we need to do to help encourage it to move on? And part of that, uh, cattail spraying is a big part of it. A lot of the stuff, it doesn't need to be dug deeper. Just needs to be maintained and keep the cattails out so what's there can function. So that's, we actually, uh, gonna have K L J put together the basics of, uh. What these guys want, so we can start considering it. Then we can go ahead, kind of like Jeff was saying, that we. Put small projects together and then the way the century code is written is assessment areas can be joined together in the end too. If they're done correctly.
And moving the water down and impacting the landowners on the bottom end, are you?
Well, that's what our.
Considering, uh, a portion of that assessment going towards flooding people out?
Well, the. That's kind of brings up the need for the whole comprehensive water plan. Shows why we need to do something for these people at the bottom end of the lake. If anything can be done. To get, get the more water moving out either by pumps or is it time that that natural outlet could be. Talked about again that some of that water could start to flow with a little bit of work. I think those are all questions that, you know, it all ties together. People at the bottom aren't really talking about that anymore. Until they hear that somebody upstream wants to do something, then all the questions come out, so it's. Hard to piecemeal this stuff when it all. Anything that's done at the very top hits the bottom and that includes, you know, all the culverts. Every time there's a stream crossing for a county culvert or a bridge. Mostly they're comeback larger. So the county is involved in making the water flow more too.
Right, and that may be something that you may want to consider increasing your budget on is stream crossing standards. I'm not sure exactly what K L J, um, charges for that or other independent engineering services. But I knew, do know that at the state level, those may be going away at some point. That they may not be, um, part of the regulatory section, that they've been overwhelmed with, uh. The number of requests and the timing of it is, it does not work out in, in, uh. Everybody's needs, so, you know, that was always a. A free service, but it was a timely service.
I think we've paid three, three to four thousand average for the smaller township sized ones that, you know, we. Think we've been quoted up to seven to eight thousand for some of the larger ones. So, I mean, it can be substantial. But, uh, right now we've had one in for a couple of months and the guy was in today, you know, why, how long do we have to wait for this to? Get something while we can pay for it, but. It's coming out of your pocket eventually.
And where does that cost get passed on to?
Well, right now, we've just been doing that, uh, general budget, so everybody in Ramsey County. These assessment areas, you know, if we have stuff on that, maybe those smaller assessment areas paying for their. Effects of their own water. Might be a way to handle it and that would be something else we need to talk with the county about as to. How, how you guys like to see that proceed?
You know, back at the, uh, outlet operations meeting two years ago. Paul Christensen asked about the federal plan and it didn't get brought. Is that something that this water board or the joint water board could? Could request to see that plan again?
I think the plan's out there.
Right, I mean. But to get a copy, you know, so it can be reevaluated.
Oh. Yeah. Um. And I'd have to find it. It's somewhere online. Um, I can't remember if it's on our website or the state's website or. Um, but there's plans out there on those, um.
I mean, if memory serves me right, it was kind of abandoned because it wasn't fast enough and it was fairly high priced twenty years ago.
You, you talking a environmental impacts study or?
Well, didn't, wasn't when they put the outlets in, where they put the first outlet in.
Yep.
Wasn't there a plan that the core engineers had developed? Also.
They, they had done a, uh. And, oh. Another study over, and I can't remember what the name of their outlet was. Um, but they had a different outlet than what the state had.
Yeah.
And so they had done their own, own planning process or environmental study on that. Um.
Yeah, that's the one.
Uh, that's the one?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, well, we can.
I mean, I think that would, I think you'd have to have that information for your general. Comprehensive plan, if you will, just because that's. Someplace to get information.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Yep, well, that's exactly why we started this, uh, you know, it's time to start the conversation. You can't get anywhere if you don't start someplace. Best way to start something anymore seems to be you throw something out there and then you get the comments coming back. Just like that.
Anything else?
Uh, no, that should, uh, cover everything we've got right at the moment.
All right.
Thanks, guys.
Next item on the agenda would be the joint boards, uh, budget. Um, not asking for any additional funds than we did last year. Costs have gone up from our. For some of our projects that we co-cost share with. The real time string crossing gauges have gone up. About ten percent in the last two years. Um. That's the thirteen sites throughout the, the Devil's Lake Basin that we cost share on. Um. And that, I think it's gonna be a busy year at the legislature with various water projects. And things that will come in, we do cost share with some lobbying and. Um, advocacy for water resource districts. There's a. And a real push from some legislators to. Dis, um, eliminate county water resource districts. And create that as a watershed. Instead of a water district. Because in their minds, that water doesn't stop at political boundaries. Which probably why we've created joint boards for the past thirty years. But they're looking at something similar to what, um, Minnesota has done with their water projects, or watersheds. Districts over in Minnesota. Um. Not sure if the Water Resource District Associations. I approve of that. Measure, but, um, there's certainly some legislators that have. Picked up that interest on moving that forward. And. I think, uh. Probably instead of just Ramsey County doing a comprehensive water. Plan, um. It should probably be come from the joint board and I'll bring that up to our board. And taking our program dollars and doing that. For the twenty twenty-five. Budget year. Because we certainly get a lot of our water from other areas besides Ramsey County. Anybody have any questions on the joint boards budget?
Jeff, on your wages or the salaries or whatever?
Yeah.
There's no change?
No.
So how does that?
Well, we've been undermarket, um. You know, we put in that amount about three years ago, um.
Well, I'm just asking because of three percent that we suggested isn't, doesn't get added to that or?
Hmm. We will have carryover in our, in our salaries this year. Um, Stacy, with the help that she gives us from Ram, the Ramsey County Water Board. She hasn't asked for any increase on her side of things and so we've been under budget. Or on that for, so if you take a look at the actual what we, um, paid out in, in salaries. In twenty-two and twenty-three, you know, far less than the seventy-one or. Um. And there was some years along the line that, you know, we either, we followed, uh, what the state. Raises were at and sometimes the state legislature. Gave their state employees a one percent or a two percent sometimes and so.
So my question is, is what we vote on doesn't affect this?
Not. What we're asking from Ramsey County is, hmm, what, less than a mil, you know? And that really hasn't changed in the last several years. As we. We either make up that with the other counties or we, um. You know, and we gave an increase to the other counties, I think last year there was about a ten percent increase. And from the other, to the other counties that were kind of lagging behind on what they're being assessed. But by far Ramsey County, uh, still pays the majority of that.
Is this a mistake or is this legit? This audit legal went from five hundred to five thousand?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's not a mistake?
No. That's something that we're gonna have to spend more, more dollars on.
No, because I just seen it was such a, a huge change.
Yep.
Just to make sure it wasn't.
No, that's because of the state auditors charging by the hour and hour. Set a flat rate or whatever.
Right.
There's a lot of.
And that's why I was asking.
Lot of changes in those costs. That we had our, had an attorney reevaluate our bylaws and joint powers agreements. Um, based on century code changes. Um, there are some century codes that changed in twenty twenty-three session and I'm. Thinking that that'll probably come back down around on this one. He, you know, the. Last legislative session, they had a bill in that required counties to belong to a joint board. Um. And at the very last moment, they changed it. It was a required, uh, two mil. That the joint boards would ask for. And the joint boards, we weren't in favor of that and we weren't, we didn't want a mandate to counties. That you had to pay that amount. Um, because in some basin areas that'd be a, a big expense. Um, you know, there are some counties that are a part of four different watersheds, uh, four different basins. And so instead of their, just a regular water board doing assessing four mills. And then each additional joint board that'd be a part of doing two mills. Um, and that could be a potential of, you know, eight mills for, uh, a county increase on. Particular counties and then nobody was in favor of mandating that. So they changed that and, and so that's where that whole discussion on joint boards was coming in, in play. You know, there's, I think, fifty-some different joint boards o- operating within the state. Hey, you know, we have a couple of the, right here in Ramsey County that they, you know, have created joint powers agreements, Ramsey and Cavalier County, Ramsey and Nelson County. That are doing separate projects on their own. Um, yeah, and they've created a joint powers agreement amongst those two different water boards. Um, it doesn't have to be a, an entire watershed, but if you're working on a project that crosses county boundaries. Makes perfect sense to go ahead and create a, a joint water board, um, within those two counties. Or potentially three or however long that drain would be or that assessment project that they'd be looking at. Um. So that's something that the legislature didn't really realize is, is that. There's all these other joint boards that are currently operating within the state that are kind of flying under the radar, but they, they work. And. Any questions of myself or the budget that we've presented? We, um, expanding our end on sites. Um, not additional sites, but we've enhanced the capabilities of them. We'll have three now within the basin that are, um, all season. Meaning they'll measure snow and snow precipitation in the winter months. Um, we're expanding the Rocket site this year and the Wolford site. Uh, last year was the one up at Clyde, trying to get the ends of the basin, um, where they. And, um, where some major coolies flow into is where these end on sites are located. And trying to collect the data. Rainfall is easy one to predict or, or gather information from. Everybody has rain gauge on their farm. Nobody's out there collecting data on snowfall and water content within that snowpack. So that's something that these stations will now do, which will be a, a great enhancement. Um. Anything else for myself or from the joint boards budget? Any questions? I'll put on this hat now again. Kevin. Ready, set, go.
Okay, just starting off, uh, projects we got going right now with our chip seal. They did finish yesterday. Um, it still needs to be farmed with a, a coat of oil and then striped after that, but. The actual rocks have been laid down. Uh, right after the fourth of July, uh, our county forces are gonna start putting in the culverts. We've got three of them, three locations that are on major coolies or, or, so I don't know if we'll be able to do them this year because of all the. Water that's flowing through there, but. Just so you're aware that there's three of those sites that may get pushed till next year. Uh, Lawson Jones wants to put in an approach on Ramsey County Eight, just a little bit east of Webster. He wants to remove one that's there and relocate it about eight hundred feet away. To make the field more accessible. Looks like a good idea to me. He's gonna pay for the work. We may supply him a culvert. But I guess we need a motion to allow that approach to go in.
He's gonna pay to remove the other one?
Yes. He'll use that same dirt, fill material.
He'll make sure that it meets specs on all that kind of good stuff?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Do we have a motion to go ahead and allow that, uh, relocation of, uh, field approach?
So it's an actual move.
Okay, we have motion, we have a second.
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, also, we had ran out with the thirty-six inch culvers, twenty footers that we had on inventory, so I'll need to order some more. And they're gonna cost ten thousand and ten dollars and ninety-six cents. So I'd like to entertain a motion to go ahead and order those through our steel.
So move.
Second.
We have motion and a second, um. Kevin, are these thirty-six inches? Kevin, are these thirty-six inches culverts that are being replaced, replacing thirty-sixes or?
Most of them, yes, there's once in a while we get into one. Uh, but then we, whoever's putting in one that's being. We don't, we, the county doesn't help pay for the ones that are brand new or new to the system. We just help pay for the ones that are existing. If that makes sense.
Yep. Cause I know we paid for thirty-six, anything above the thirty-six and above.
Right.
So. Okay, we have motion and a second to go ahead and order some additional thirty-six inch culverts from True North Steel. Further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries.
Okay, now that we, we received the two rental tractors from leading edge equipment for mowing road ditches. Uh, the agreements are six thousand dollars each and we'll get a five hundred dollar credit back each. So I guess I entertain a motion to pay the rental price to John Deere of twelve thousand dollars for the tractors.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to go ahead and pay John Deere twelve thousand dollars for rental tractors, we paying that today?
Yes.
So roll call please.
Will Helmy.
Aye.
Otis.
Aye.
Bulk.
Aye.
Gesner.
Aye.
Brett.
Aye. Motion passes.
Okay, and we also got a invoice from Strata for the overlay patch they did just the ways east of town on Ramsey two. Uh, the cost was eleven thousand five hundred and twenty dollars and eighty-six cents. The city has agreed to pay for half of that. So I'm asking for a motion to pay Strata for the eleven thousand five hundred and twenty eighty-six.
So is that total eleven thousand or is it half of?
It is total, the city ends up paying half that number, so they're gonna reimburse us.
Right, there you go, yep.
We'll send them an invoice and yep.
So moved, second.
We have motion and a second to go ahead and pay Strata for the work done east of town. Um, further discussion? Roll call please.
Otis.
Aye.
Will Helmy.
Aye.
Bulk.
Aye.
Gesner.
Aye.
Brett.
Aye, motion passes.
Uh, True North Steel delivered all the culverts that we had ordered. Uh, we also got a floodgate for the city of Prairie, uh, some twenty-four inch poly for the water board and. A couple of other special orders. So that total, all those total invoices were forty-four thousand six hundred and ninety-three dollars and one cent. So I'd like to entertain a motion to pay that in those invoices.
So moved.
Okay.
We have motion and a second to go ahead and pay the invoice from True North Steel, forty-four thousand six ninety-three oh one. Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Bulk.
Aye.
Otis.
Aye.
Gesner.
Aye.
Will Helmy.
Aye.
Brett.
Aye, motion passes.
Uh, KLJ has presented an invoice for the construction work. Construction inspection on Ramsey County three, thin lift overlay project with Mayo Construction. Uh, that invoice was four thousand five hundred and fifty-four dollars and ninety-three cents. So I'd like to entertain a motion to pay KLJ.
So moved, second.
We have motion and a second to go ahead and pay KLJ for the work they done on Ramsey County three. Forty-five hundred and fifty-four dollars and ninety-three cents. Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Gesner.
Aye.
Otis.
Aye.
Will Helmy.
Aye.
Bulk.
Aye.
Brett.
Aye, motion carries.
And we had a while their invoice come in for the progressive estimate number one for the thin left overlay project. With Mayo Construction, it was for their Mayo's bond payment. So the total of estimate number one is three thousand four dollars and forty-one cents. So I'd like to entertain a motion to pay Mayo Construction uh for their bond payment through estimate number one.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and pay Mayo Construction, uh, three thousand four dollars and forty-one cents.
Right.
And we're paying that, correct?
Yes.
Roll call please.
Otis.
Aye.
Bulk.
Aye.
Gesner.
Aye.
Will Helmy.
Aye.
Brett.
Aye, motion carries.
That's all I have unless you have questions for me.
You guys have uh NDL tab come in and do some uh training?
Motor grader training, uh, last week. Um, I think we had three people attend, four, three. Um, anyway, yeah, we did, lasted the whole day, six hours of training.
Good.
It's actually the second one for these guys, but um this time it was a butler technician that came in and did the training, so. It was more specified to the R controls, the controls on our machines. The really, really fancy stuff or stuff they don't use every day, so it was really beneficial to the three new guys.
Good. How's everything going with the staff and?
Good, we're full staff again, uh. I think the three guys that we've hired are both, all three of them are doing a real good job as far as blading, so. Getting many uh positive feedback on all three of them, so.
Good. I know it's been a challenging uh year, given the weather, so.
Yes, the rain is just, we are way behind on our schedule, but actually the roads are getting better. I mean, a lot of the soft spots either healed themselves up or went away or whatever they did, but they're not there anymore.
Okay. Uh, tell them to keep up the good work.
All right, and then I guess the Paul, you got anything?
Appreciate it, anybody? Okay, anybody have anything else for Kevin?
Nope.
Thank you, appreciate your time. Unfinished business, uh, floodplain administration, uh, anybody have anything for that? I know, uh. The Ag and Natural Resource Committee that's um in charge of that interim study. On uh floodplain administration, met I think a week ago or two weeks ago now. Um, down in Fargo, they had that discussion, looks like there is a proposed. Uh, legislation that will be coming forth that will transfer floodplain administration from townships to the county. So whether or not that moves through will be yet to be determined. Um, so, but. Anybody wants to take a look at that, it's available on. And the legislative website under interim and Ag and Natural Resources is the. Is the committee that's discussing that. Anybody else have anything else for floodplain administration? Standing committee is for the North Dakota County Commission Association. Um, we had this in our packet, I think last month. Something that people were gonna consider, I think they needed an answer by the twenty-fifth of July, was it? July twenty-sixth. So one of the things that would be probably attending a few meetings either prior to the convention. Uh, in October. And what is there? Um, audit, what are the committees? So the standing committees would be the audit committee, the nominating committee, uh, resolutions committee, legislative committee. And uh. Then there's one that's no appointment necessary constitution bylaws committee. But um, every year at the convention, there'll be some resolutions, um. That will be agreed upon or talked about. Nominating committee, um. Nominating committee prepares the slated candidates for president, vice president, treasurer and two or three vacant director positions on the board. Audit committee generally meets uh the Sunday prior to the convention, goes through the books of the um board. And then the legislative committee probably meets a little more often via Zoom or Teams. However they do that and talk about some of the legislative issues facing counties um across the state. And gives a direction towards the association of counties on which way we should be lobbying or not lobbying. Um, that one may be a big deal coming up, so if anybody wants to sit on a committee. The other thing is you probably have to go to the conference and convention in October. And they have the dates for that, I can't remember, the seventh eighth of October. Um.
Yeah, it was, I think it was meeting before two.
Hey, you were on that legislative committee last go-around.
It was just basically did it on the web base.
Yeah. Um, so.
They were.
Yep. You have an opinion that'd be where to voice it? When I get a direction for the uh counties, um, that'd be a good way to do it. Um, association of counties, I know Kevin's gone through that. Um, all the chairs through that and a good experience, would highly recommend it. Anybody wants to? Be involved in the association of counties, whether on the state level or national level, that'd be a, a good thing to do.
Convention is October twentieth through the twenty-second.
So it is later this year, okay? All right. Anybody wanna uh volunteer?
Right now I don't have the time, I.
Yeah.
Would not commit to that, I guess.
Okay. Well, if we change our mind or we wanna submit a name, um, we'll meet again on July sixteenth. We can um think about it if anybody has an interest. We'll bring that up. North Dakota Fallen Heroes in front of the memorial building, I wanted to, wanted to give an update. Uh, Mike Graffsgaard, uh, Roger Gunderson, myself, um, Bryce Crosby took a look at. Uh, where we wanted to do that and it looks like the ball boat by the, um, where the flag's included. Is where that statue would be um placed along with some. Oh, um, a granite marker and they're getting that from North Central Granite.
They pay for it.
Yep. We, we'll, we'll probably have some cost in some uh landscape rocking and some landscape work that'll be around that. Um, and Roger already picked up the um landscape rock, he wanted to add some additional rock on the south side of the memorial building. So this would be on the further south ball boat where the flag is located on the uh memorial building. And I believe they have a, a firm date with the um. General Dorman will be presenting um and part of that ceremony. Um, the two names that will be on the statue itself will be um Santos and Lindy. Uh, the fallen uh national guardsmen that were part of the operation. Iraqi Freedom or Desert Storm, those two campaigns. Uh, they'll be on the plackets or the statue itself and then the granite marker will um honor all veterans. Um, so. And uh, so July or August ninth is the date of that. I think it's a Friday, that was the date that the um General Dorman was available.
For the presentation?
Uh, it'll be a dedication of that. And I think the families of the fallen will be present at that. And we'll try to get some, maybe some other um, whether state or federal dictatories that would be.
I plan to have this all complete by then.
Yep, the, the statue's already here, the plaques are already here. Um, it's a matter of ordering the granite and uh Mike and Bryce, we're gonna take care of that. And the veterans organizations were um paying for that, that um VFW and American Legion. We're gonna um take care of the cost on that and um. So, but what it is is a, you, you know, a statue of a M sixteen with a helmet on it and a pair of boots. As you've seen for fallen soldiers and that'll be out in front of the memorial building, we thought that was a. Very good spot for honoring our fallen heroes. And that, uh, I do not have any other unfinished business unless anybody has any questions on regarding that. And certainly, um. More news will be available for that and certainly welcome all the county commissioners to be. Present for that dedication on the ninth of August. New business. And July sixteenth meeting, you can see the uh time is earlier, four P M or earlier. I think if all the budget discussions go as long as Mr. Cummings, uh, we may need some additional time. Anybody have any thoughts on? July sixteenth?
I wanna try to get as many um. Budgets heard so that um if we need additional meetings. Before the August meeting to review everything that there's, there's time. Because I know, I know the sixteenth isn't gonna work for everybody, so. I wanna try to get. As many as I can.
We could get, get all the internal departments done, couldn't we? Prior to five o'clock. You're not gonna take a half hour? No.
No. Okay.
Uh.
Yeah.
I, I guess I'd be open three thirty, if you guys are open to that, so.
Three thirty on the sixteenth?
Yeah, that might be done by then.
Okay, we'll do that. Back lunch.
Can, can we make a motion for that?
Okay.
I'll make a motion, three thirty time for the sixteenth for meeting.
All second.
Been moved and seconded that we, uh, start the July sixteenth meeting at three thirty.
Is that going to work Sheriff?
Oh.
Like, but we can push him to, push him to the back end of it.
Yeah, but if Lee is part of the interview process.
I think we should be done because the last thing back though.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Holy crap, I used my phone. It actually worked out.
Technology sometimes. Any further discussion on the sixteenth starting at three thirty? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. So we think we'll, uh, get to the five percent that, uh, is requested, recommended.
If the department's heavy on wages like the state's attorney's offices. Probably aren't. But I guess if, you know, he came in and I think he justified what he proposed, uh, that's what I'm looking for is, you know, I know Candy, I talked to Candy a couple of days after the last meeting and you know, she went through and I think you were two percent short of the five.
Yeah.
You know, so I
Yeah.
You know, she showed me that she'd been cutting. She hadn't put in, she put in cost of living, but not the steps. So yeah, she didn't make the five, but she's kind of indicated that she's going to at least pull par or be a little bit less. So I think that's you know. The goal was five, but if you can come in and say, hey, this is what I've done. You know, I, I think that's a legitimate attempt.
And there is on my budget, there is like for a part-time employee that we've just left there during election time because I mean, I use all my resources within the building for everybody else to help out, but you know, we've always left it just in case and, you know. I don't know that I need that full amount. You know, it could probably cut it in half.
Next year not being an election year.
Yeah.
Certainly hope. Um, the one idea that I have is, you know, instead of individual departments is having an overall county reduction of five percent.
Yeah.
Um, and I, and I think that's a very reasonable expectation because there was a lot of one-time expenditures that we had this year that we won't need next year, um, specifically that software, the enhancements that we did there. Um, not sure if all that will get, uh, done and paid for this year, but keep our fingers crossed, but that was our intention moving into this year and, um, you know, if you stop and look at that, about six, seven hundred thousand dollars. And out of a seventeen million dollar budget, uh, you only need, uh, you know, a few hundred thousand dollars more to a couple hundred thousand dollars more to hit that five, five percent mark. And, uh, so I think over, overall individual departments, there's going to be some that are going to struggle. I think there's going to be some costs that are going to have to, um, take a look at. Certainly the Siren twenty twenty program with radios is going to be an issue and uh, whether we get those ordered this year, I think, um,
That's a big deal. I mean that.
That's a, that's a really big deal.
Needs to be done.
And it needs to be done. Um, and whether or not we accommodate all our rural entities that are identified. Um, or, hey, you know, I don't know. If we do a rural, uh, Starkweather Fire Department is Devil's Lake Rural Fire Department going to want the same consideration?
We've already ordered.
Hey, you've already ordered yours?
We've been putting money away for that for several years.
Got any leftover for the other rural fire departments?
No. But it does. Well, but I mean, you know, the, the catch to that whole thing is the Siren isn't going to go effective here until a little bit later. So if you want to be able to stay, if you buy a single band radio, you're gonna, they're gonna sit on the shelf.
Yep.
So, you know, we went with the dual band so we could use them now and then just transition into it. Not, you know, that's gonna I don't want to say double the cost, but it's at least thirty percent more. You know, and it's already a huge number when you you know, if you got ten trucks or whatever, that's six, five, six thousand dollar radio for a mobile.
It's a, it, it, it's a really big expense and there's a lot of radios out there within the county. And, um,
Thing to keep in mind is the reimbursement on that is done on March.
Twenty fifth?
Yeah.
That's, I mean, that's why if you don't do it this next budget, you're going to miss out on the fifteen hundred dollars coming back.
You'll have to yell it really loud from back there, Sheriff. In order for people to hear you, but appreciate that, um, March twenty twenty-five will, the reimbursement will be over with. And so they need to be ordered prior to that.
Yep.
And if we have any money laying around, um, be good to get them done. Cause I do believe that we had set some money aside in our book for that.
Two hundred and fifty.
Two fifty, I think you're right.
Two hundred and fifty thousand.
But that, that probably won't cover it.
No.
So.
We knew that.
And we knew that. So, um, but I think that reduction can be met countywide. Individual departments may be more difficult. Um, but I appreciate people.
Still think they need to come in and justify.
Right.
Well, that's, you know, I think.
So not just so it's a forgiveness.
Well, I think that's important too that since that Mill Levy group got their petition in.
Yeah.
And if we can justify, you know, that, hey, we're, we're still trying to cut and not patent the budget just in case this thing goes through. So, you know, we're at that level, I think.
Well.
It's integrity for us to do that. I mean, and, and just to show, you know.
I think right. Try, try to get to that twenty twenty-four level.
Yeah.
Um, would be good. Um, but if we could cut out the big one-time expenditures, even better. Because I think we're going to be held to the twenty twenty-four, um, assessment.
Yeah.
If that, if that were to, to move forward and, and pass. And so, um, and I think it's going to be scramble season come November sixth, if that thing passes on the fifth. So and the legislature will need.
There won't be anything extra going on.
Yeah, there won't be any, anything extra. Yep. So, um, so being prudent with, with people's budgets will be extremely important. Um, seeing some of the, the budgets from last year come in. Um, underspending was always good. Looking at some of those, it, it appears a lot of it was, um, employee related.
Yep.
Um, you know, how many deputies were you down last year Sheriff? And had a hard time filling. Two for quite some time. Kevin, you were probably down a, an employee or two for a good portion of the year.
Yeah, on average, you're probably a whole year, probably short two for the
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, um, but it's always a, uh, stressful time of year. Everybody has a little patience with everybody and treats everybody with some uh, dignity and respect. I think we can all get through it and still be friends at the end of the day. Which, you know, we, we all have to show up again the next day, so.
Yep.
Yeah. Um, L E C, if we can move on to portfolio reports, I can start. Oh, Karen. Would you like to address the commission today? Wonderful. Our visitor.
Yes, a visitor. I think this is on.
It is.
Okay. Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for allowing me to speak to you. I'm Karen Hausman from Churchess Ferry. My husband Gemini, um, farm and own land in Chain Lakes, Sandy Grove Townships that are inundated by Devil's Lake flooding and water flowing in from the north part of the county. I am also a township supervisor for Chain Lakes Township. Last meeting of your board, it was announced that an eighteen-page draft of a letter had been or announced by the state's attorney that an eighteen-page letter had been drafted and created, which presumably is, um, a response for the letters submitted by Garland Hoistad in the fall of twenty twenty-three. And it is clear that additional opinion is needed for many reasons. Private property rights being one, which directly affects me. Taxation, which affects the county and all of its citizens. Um, economic activity and quality of life, um, that was mentioned earlier today. Don't even ask me about the quality of life where I'm at. And also when the water board talks about a comprehensive water plan, an outline. I think it's clear that there's more information needed based on the questions Garland asked about prior attorney general opinions, land ownership, inundation, and how that affects each of us as individuals, as well as the townships, the counties and the state. So please keep this, um, letter on your agenda so that people like me who are directly impacted can be informed and know where we stand, um, when something is finally received. Thank you.
I think the letter was submitted, Sheriff.
Yep.
It was.
And is there a, where, where does a person find that? Is it posted or?
Would you like it?
Okay. Thank you.
I guess I didn't know if anyone had questions.
Anybody have any questions for Karen? Appreciate you coming in and sitting through our, uh, meeting. Congratulations on your retirement and thank you for all your, uh, work over the years with the, uh, Ramsey Bank and Trust Company. Any other visitors? Sheriff, did you have anything for us today?
We had a request and she just reminded me, um, the casino security reached out to us and asked if we'd be willing to do security out at their events at the casino. But they want us to wear our uniforms, use our vehicles uh, to do this and they just reimburse the county. I got an issue with it. One, it's sovereign nation. We have no jurisdiction out there. The second one is, is we're going out of our jurisdiction into a different jurisdiction would be in Benson County. Uh, I believe Benson County is also reaching out to other agencies and counties to see what they would do in a situation like this. I told the head of security, I bring it to the commission. Um, I said, I really didn't see it happening. I'm not comfortable doing it. Uh, just wanted to get your guys' inputs and thoughts.
So since it's Benson County, wouldn't so since it's Benson County, wouldn't Benson County have to hire us? Benson County can go over there because it's their county, but wouldn't they have to hire us so that the jurisdiction now? You know what I'm saying? You're basically working for Benson County at that time or wouldn't, is that how that works?
Well, it, it could work that way.
To be legal.
It, to be, yeah, on the legal side or you would to be covered liability. But the issue that we're, you would have is we don't have jurisdiction in Indian country over enrolled members. So anything that would happen with an enrolled member out there, we wouldn't have any jurisdiction to do anything with. We'd basically just be detaining. So if you got an altercation with them, you're kind of opening yourself up to a liability because.
So Benson County is supposed to be doing it?
Well, Benson County has done it, but I think there's been question about the liability and the legal. You got it right. Cause I think one of their officers got in to a situation where he got assaulted. And I, I think that's where the issue came from. You know, we personally, we have a hard time getting enough deputies in our own county to cover all the street dances, wedding dances, because they're coming in on their time off to do them. But if they're not enrolled, uh, yeah, then we, then if Benson would, Benson County would cross debuts us, then we would have jurisdiction over them.
So since, if I was to go out there and I'm not enrolled, right? The B I A can't arrest me, but I could be arrested by you. I just, I'm just asking the question because you know, because I'm in their jurisdiction.
Yeah. B I A would detain you until Benson County.
Okay.
Why do you have plans?
No, I'm just asking the question because when you say
And see, I posed
so if we were to go there.
See, and I posed a question to the head of security at the casino. I said, why don't you just hire these guys as security officers? Give them a security shirt and let them go work it. Well, they don't want to do that. They want us to come in our uniforms, bring our vehicles and they just pay like a hundred dollars an hour. Wow. I think there's a liability there.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I, I just, I, yeah.
Do we have any mutually aid agreements with Spirit Lake Nation or Benson County on if they need assistance?
Uh, not, nothing written, writing.
I'm not even sure if that would would fit the bill, you know, um, because it's not an, uh, an, an emergency.
But we have responded out there in an emergency situation.
Yeah.
I've responded out there when they're trying to get a hold of one of their officers, can't reach them on the radio.
But it's an emergency.
Right. He was in an altercation with. And as we're enrolled, they called, a neighbor called and said, yeah, your officer's out here fighting with somebody and he's starting to lose. So, I mean, yeah, we respond to that.
Um, I'm in agreement with you, Sheriff. I think it's a great liability issue for our department, our deputies.
And, and for the sheriff's office to cover wedding dances or street dances in our county. You could say that, you know, that's a private entity hiring us to do so, but it's in our county. So I, I leaving the county is a big thing for me.
Yeah, because of the liability.
Right.
Not that there's not liability right here, but it's
But they're still
Yeah.
Providing service. If they're, they're providing a service for the people who are paying their wages.
And I'd make the motion that we don't do it.
I second it.
Motion and a second to go ahead and deny the request from the Spirit Lake, uh, casino on providing security. Further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Alright, thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh portfolios, anybody have anything that they wanna share? I know it's uh right at the beginning of the month kinda thing and.
Uh the, we've finally plugged in the last missing piece for a township officer on the planning and zoning steering committee. So I can't be sent off or is sending off to the engineer that we're ready to start whatever it is we're starting. But that's all I've got.
I have nothing really.
Have nothing at this time either.
All right. Law enforcement center, um I know that uh we have another committee meeting or a committee building that will be attending or traveling to Indiana to view of the Fulton County Correction Facility there. Come back with feedback to the um entire board that will be doing that on the twenty-third of of uh July. Well, what the firm does is they will pick people up out at the Devil's Lake Airport uh and have them back here in time for supper that evening. So uh and I'm, think they needed to fill those seats by yesterday, but if there's an opening, uh Commissioner Otis indicated that maybe.
Yep, I can't.
Can't, okay. I, I know it's a tough time of year for a lot of people to get away. Um but we'd like to have input from not only commissioners, but community members too that um because it's gonna be a, a major hurdle to bring forth. And it's gonna have to be a major lift from the state and federal government.
And as, sorry Jeff, as a commissioner, I went there the first time.
Yep.
Um if you haven't went, it's a huge eye-opener from where we're at to where we probably should be. Like, yeah, it's extremely essential for people to go there and, and see the eye-opener of how far behind we are in time.
Yeah. So, and Commissioner Wilhelm, either one of you be interested? Hey, it's the twenty-third of July. And like I said, I don't know if there's still room on the the deal, but it's wheels up at eight thirty. Yeah, wheels back on the ground at six thirty that evening.
I could probably make that work if you need somebody to go.
I'll see if they have an opening. And I think it'd be good for other commissioners that are not on the L E C board to be a part of that as well.
Just for the under, the understanding of the difference. It's, it's crazy.
No, nobody wants to propose a, a new building, especially one of that magnitude. But um when you see the, the need for it and the enhancements that we could um have for our community and potential cost savings, you know, just having outside food service would be a a major cost savings to the community. Um so we'll uh double check after the meeting here and see if they have room for you, Commissioner. Other than that, we're working on a uh a, either a business after hours or ribbon cutting for the new terminal out at the airport. That is completed. Um I think all the boxes have been checked. And so um working with the chamber office and the airport authority and city and county and that kinda thing and make sure that everybody that is invited to that, great, great addition to our community. And it, it did not interrupt our travel at all, you know. In fact, we've been increasing boarding numbers. Having records for the past eighteen months. So really great to see. So when we get that date, we'll make sure that we make that announcement and everybody has the opportunity to come on and tour that new facility. With that, um July sixteenth, three thirty, everybody down. Meeting adjourned.